Okay. Stand salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Acknowledge that the agenda was posted but then reposted within like less than an hour. And it was due to a typo on the date of the meeting as April 15th. It was typed as March 15th.
Okay, we'll make note of that. Thank you.
And I believe that's allowable. I think I've heard that as long as you just put on there that it's the second posting or something like that. I think you're okay.
Alex typed it as a revised due to typo.
Right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, item five, considering possible action on the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 regular meeting. I did, yes, you're welcome. She probably going for sale. Yes.
Just set it on top.
They are. Well. Anybody have any corrections or additions to the minute? I don't.
Neither. I move to approve the April 8th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that. It's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Hess, Bobbit, Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I like your initials, they're easy to write. Yeah, they're easy to write.
Well, sometimes I have problems.
Steve is our US Commissioner, this is his official second meeting.
Oh yeah. And it's gonna really seem like it too.
See, what's that sign? S.S.
It's SOS, no?
No, SOS. Thing about Hogan T-Rose.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay, item six, comment from the public on the below agenda items.
Is this the spot where we can put Dusty up here and let him speak for a couple minutes? Or would you rather move that on up?
No, he's on the agenda, so we will skip over it.
Yeah, they have to sign, there's a paper they sign in down there if they want to speak.
Okay, down to item seven, discussion, take the possible action on the following agenda items. Seeing that being the case and Dusty is here listed as item Q, I would entertain a motion to jump down to item Q and let Dusty present his pipeline proposal to us.
So moved, I make a motion, we move down to item Q and let Dusty address the board.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Who said, I'm sorry?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
I have a second, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's alright.
Hess?
Yes.
Bobbit?
Yes.
Stinson?
Aye.
At 9:06 for, is that what time you guys add?
That clock is a couple minutes past.
I've got 9:05.
9:05, okay, 9:05, okay. Dusty, we'll let you have the floor. We appreciate you coming up and meeting with us and letting us, advising us on what you guys have planned and how we can help and what we need to do to help you or you need to do to help us.
Well, I sure appreciate you all working me in so quickly and also for accommodating the move on the agenda, so you guys are too nice up here. I wish other counties...
For accommodating?
Yeah, that's right. And there's a map.
Got it, thank you.
So I know, I'm just getting to know all y'all and a little bit about me. I grew up in Seminole County, so I love coming to small towns. And I worked at the OSU Extension Office for years, so I told Dusty, I grew up in a courthouse in Waukesha, so I like going to different courthouses in the state.
Okay.
But I work for One Oak and we've had a long time to plan here ever since we acquired it for a lot of employees in the area. And we process natural gas liquids there at the plant. And would love to, if y'all haven't ever been on a tour of the plant, we'll take you on one sometime. But part of my job is to kind of deal with elected officials, county officials, governments, things like that. I won't be filing or signing most of the permits, but with all the activity going on in the state, we're just trying to be real proactive so people know what we're up to on the front end. And we've got a lot of natural gas liquids coming into our Hutchison, up in Hutchison, Kansas. We've got a number of fracs up there similar to what we've got here in Medford. And we decided to build, our board approved, 92 mile, 20 inch pipeline that we're calling our North Line 7 Extension. That's gonna bring raw, unfractionated natural gas liquids from the Hutchison area down to Medford where they can be fracked. So we're real excited about that. We, you know, this project hadn't gotten a whole lot of attention, but it was announced pretty recently, so we thought, well, we need to get out and visit. Most of it's obviously to be in Kansas, so here in Oklahoma, I just got Grant County. And I don't know, you know, we've got a timeline kind of put there, but we're starting here next week or so to engage landowners, property owners, so we'll start asking for survey permissions and then hopefully start securing right away. And we're hoping to do that through the spring and summer. And probably spring or late summer, fall, sometime in that timeline, hopefully have all that secured and start construction.
Okay.
Would anticipate that by next summer, that pipeline would hopefully be in operation. So it's 20 inch, which is a pretty good size for a natural gas liquid pipeline. So it'd have the capacity to carry about 250,000 barrels of NGLs a day to Medford. So it's a pretty, pretty big deal for us, so that I keep the plant here hopping. So, you know, I don't know at this point in time how many permits we'll be asking at all four road crossings, what have you, but I kind of asked my folks, on this one, you can see kind of up here a little bit of a map. It kind of shows you where we're kind of looking. Now, that obviously isn't set in stone, because we just hadn't secured any right yet.
Right.
But it gives you an idea, you know, that we're gonna be obviously west of Highway 81 there. And I think, I believe that's about 20 miles-ish of pot in the county.
Okay.
So I think, does that sound about right, 20 miles from the border?
Yeah, probably pretty close.
About 16.
Yeah, I'd say 16.
Yeah, about 16.
Would be closer, but...
So I like it, I didn't introduce myself. So, you know, the main thing, I think, is just wanted to introduce myself, so hopefully y'all see me around a little bit more. I've got some cards and my cell numbers on here.
Okay.
And I want you to never hesitate to call me if there's any issues. Because we want to be, you know, folks up here in this county.
There's my card, and on the back is Grace, she works for Congressman Frank Lucas. And she had, I was talking, I was talking to her last week and she's wanting a tour of the plant.
Yeah, she called, I called her last week, yeah. I missed her call, I called her last week, and she called me back Friday and I haven't called her yet.
Oh, okay, very good.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah, okay, thank you.
We were hoping to have Senator Langford here last August, and then they got called back to DC.
Yeah.
He's not doing anything there, he doesn't...
So when she comes, I would like to join you in that tour, please.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
I think, I haven't talked to her yet.
Okay, yeah.
But I talked to my plant folks last week and Friday's usually a pretty good time. Does that work pretty well?
Oh, yeah, I'm hit or miss, but yeah, if, yeah, if it works out that you're here, I'd certainly like to join you with her. She's a really good lady that does a good job for our congressman.
Well, that's great, I really appreciate it.
I used to work in that plant, so I have a pretty good tour of that.
You probably don't need it, not close in personal.
We want to be a good neighbor and one thing we try, you know, not ever, not ever, of course I'm biased, but not every company does this, and I've learned, especially in southern counties where there's so much going on, you know, west of the city, that it just, it's really good to have a face and a name, because if y'all are having trouble, you know, with contractors, we're tearing up roads, or we're not doing something right, or if there are landowners that are really upset, we'd rather hear about it sooner rather than later. We want to try to do the best we can to be a good neighbor. So, because folks up here have been really good to us through the years.
Well, no, it's been good at Medford too.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Dusty, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, nice to meet you, and thanks for having me today.
Absolutely.
You all have my number, so if there's anything I can help you with, just let me know.
Well, we know how road issues are, they, sometimes you are not aware of what's going on out here and we're not aware until we get a phone call and go out and look it over. And if we have an issue, we'll get ahold of you and appreciate you coming and making us aware of the project.
Thank you very much.
Yep, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll head off to talk to the city folks now. Well, now, now I gotta be extra, don't I?
Let's move back up to item A.
Thank you.
You need a motion to...
Yes, I do.
I will, motion to accept Dusty Barr's proposal?
No, we, no, we just, that's just, we just need to move up to item A, yeah. And I'll second moving to item A.
Okay, at, nine thirteen, okay. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stinson?
Aye.
Item A, transfers of appropriation.
I have this one, but I don't know if you want me to wait, because I had typed, redone that on the fair board and added all the dates of travel and everything. Well, he signed the transfer, but Phil didn't sign that, which are two different issues, but we want to go ahead and do the transfer.
It'll be in place before you.
Yeah.
Okay, Phil signed it. For the $500.
$500 from M&amp;O to travel?
Yes, that's right.
I'd make a motion to approve the transfer from the, $500 from M&amp;O to travel for the fairground improvement.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stinson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Oh, I'm sorry, you already signed that. You're fast.
How about that? Item B, purchase orders and travel claims, review. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Stinson? I mean, Bobbit?
Aye.
Stinson? Gosh, it was a long week last week. I don't see how you travel and do all that and keep your wits about yet.
I don't, I don't always, no.
And you'll need to sign the second page too.
Okay, yeah. Oh.
What?
I signed in the wrong place, Paul hadn't signed that.
No. Stop it.
Is that the only one I'm ready?
Yes, it's a single. Oh, Mike's back there, so when she comes, she can pick them up.
I will slide these out here and let it get started. There you go.
Steve, is this your phone?
Ah, I'd like to have one like that again, but no, it's not.
I have, I have one like that, but that, I've got a foot phone, but no, that's not mine.
Okay, somebody left it in the clerk's office. Nope, it's not.
They might be able to look on the...
Last call, call him and say, recall the last call.
Who's that lady that used to do that? She says, is this, is this the party to whom I'm speaking?
Oh, Lily Tom.
Yeah.
Most gracious. Most gracious hello.
That was good, clean fine, you know?
I like the Carol Burnett deal. They, you know, they got those infomercials on, and I'll sit there and watch the infomercial, because I've got all those clips from it. Oh, gosh.
Was he the old man that was on fire? That was Marty Johnson. Oh, okay, yeah. He didn't make, Tim was the old... Oh, that's right, that's... Or Edith Anne, remember Edith Anne?
Oh, yeah, and family.
Are you in a new folder, or?
Yes, I am.
That's the end of that folder.
Here, I'll let you have the...
Yeah, it's right here. When I have question on this one called right here, was this after hours? Because that, we didn't get timely, that, did we get that after hours?
Yes, yes.
We always need to write that down, that if the clerks, it was after 4:30 and somewhere on there, put like, it's after 4:30 and you couldn't get a PO till the next day.
Yeah, John like handed it in the next day.
Yeah, so we need to...
Is that all?
Yes.
Have a good day, Paul.
Uh huh, see ya.
See ya.
See ya.
That's a single, he, I just had him sign that. Now we're starting a new folder.
Yeah, them still going that folder?
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
Oops. It's green.
Yeah.
When you send these checks to them to dispense, it's like $50 for the consortium fees. Our contract runs July 1 through June 30th, so we're paying this ahead of time. This isn't technically due till July 1st. I mean, they're used to billing everything out, you know, annually. They're used to billing January to December, but we need to make sure that we put on there that, that this is our contract of July.
That it's the annual.
Yeah, it's the annual contract that's July 1 through June 30th, so that we don't, so we know where we are financially. Technically, that probably shouldn't have been paid till July 1st, but I don't know what, if you want to, how you want to handle that.
I mean, if you want to hold it, we can hold it, and then I can just write that on, I mean, we can leave it in there to hold.
Or since you've already got them all made, I don't know, you might need to...
But be sure that it's on the annual.
So we need to just tell them, you know, remember, don't bill us till July 2020 now. That's the end of that folder.
Okay.
Is that a Bush extension stuff again?
Yeah. Good stuff, good stuff. Get up close and personal with it.
I don't think they like inside that stuff with the red shirt on there.
It could bounce.
Yeah.
Being red. That's the last of that folder. That's the last one. That's the last one. That's the last one on that one. That's the only one for that one. Sign that one, that's the last one. Send it.
This the same deal as we were just talking about?
Yeah, that's the same thing, yeah, same thing. A whole chicken on that one.
Yeah, I know, I seen that.
Happy Easter, I guess.
Make me hungry.
Yeah. Well, you still got a night job, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I do. And all I get is people look back there and, don't you have another job? Yeah, but I don't do it at night, so I gotta come in here.
They'll keep you off the streets.
Yeah, exactly, give me no time. My wife likes it because she knows exactly where I'm at. No question about it. She drives by on her way home from work and sees my truck and everything's rosy.
She's thinking, boy, am I gonna have a good evening.
No kidding, it's gonna be quiet tonight.
And not only is he working, he can't spend it because he's.
Exactly, yeah.
So off she goes to the mall.
Oh, yeah, if she would, if she wasn't so tired, it's more like to the, plants are plenty.
Yeah.
Jeez. All about that.
Oh, I brought y'all back a bunch of pens.
Did ya?
They're pretty, I mean, maybe everyone had pens and they'd go, well, take a bunch. I said, well, our commissioners were saying they needed pens.
They're desperate. Last folder.
Last one.
Last folder. Do we need receiving reports for those? For the refund on the deposit, this will be the last folder.
The refund.
Yeah, I think we need, I don't know, are they like, see, I know the only thing we don't need a receiving report is utilities, but I don't know about these if we, if we need, you know.
Because it's like, I don't know. I guess then, I mean, I don't, I don't know, is, is there a point to it? Because you're not really, it's a.
I don't know.
It's a deposit.
I know, but they're funny about.
I'm, I'm a receiving for the, um, Fair Board.
We probably ought to, probably on these, I'll just put notes and put receiving.
Because I can sign a receiving report for that.
And then you might, since when the auditors come back, ask them, because I don't remember which ones.
Yeah, I know, like you said, on the utilities, you don't have to have them, but I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, and on hotels, you don't have to, yeah, they, yeah, they have to pay, it's fifty bucks, but they have to put a hundred fifty dollar deposit to make sure it's left clean and all that, so we just need to make sure we're following the.
I never really understood it because I thought, I think there's, yeah, yeah. Now, that'd be a good question for the auditors, I'll ask about the hotels.
Well, no, they said hotels we didn't have to, I thought, I thought they said, I think we have been too, but I was thinking, I thought maybe they said you don't have to, we, we still do, it's just easier, it's just easier.
Well, to me, a receiving report is that you're getting a tangible item, you know, a material item delivered, where it's a service, it's not a, I mean.
So is that something where the deposit's being returned to them?
Yes, yes.
So you, basically, they're just trying to figure out a way to say, okay, we've received it and then it's been given back, so it really, just kind of.
But I mean, the P O is showing that though.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I have to, I don't know. Let's come back to the hotel because I'll. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Save, save a tree. Max, do you want to look at this stuff from our audit all?
Yeah, I do, please, thank you.
Pick up the phone.
Oh.
Pick and plug everything, yes.
Who, who? The auditors, oh.
When they're in here.
Tell them that's fine, but they really need to hook it back up when they leave, I mean, that I understand, but tell them, make sure the hooks stuck when they leave.
Leave it how you found it. Oh, hi, I'm sorry, it's Cindy, I dialed the wrong number, I apologize. Okay, fix it.
That's the last one.
Okay.
No, it's gotta be more, Max, you got some over there on the.
He's hiding them, he's hiding them.
They're hidden over here.
Hi, can you come in for a minute and then the P O's will be ready shortly? All right, thank you, bye bye. I signed this one, I signed it on the wrong line, so I'm just gonna reprint it.
Oh.
Okay, purchase order and travel claims approved.
I'd make a motion to approve the payment of purchase orders in terms of.
I know you were gonna give me a chance. Hey, I'm trying to straighten papers and I can't do two. My multitasking goes so far and it's not very far.
You want to second it?
I will second it, I can do that. If I can quit talking.
It's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Uh, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
You want to take those with you?
Yes. You stop that and then, and then next time, I sign on the wrong line, I just gotta reprint it.
Items C, blanket purchase orders, approval, we have two of them. One for District Three and one for, uh. Call it again for the Fair Board.
I have a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, blanket purchase order for District Three.
And District.
And Fair Board.
And the Fairgrounds.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and said it all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Aye, oh, sorry.
Aye. Well, the cadence was a little bit different, so you, you. Little timing was a little different. That's what I was looking at, so I was getting ready to ask you for because. Because.
K I M D, mortgage tax insurance certificate fee for March twenty nineteen, fifty-five dollars.
I'll move that we pay the tax.
Except you acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it, yes.
Second.
My office.
I know.
I thought it was right here. It's not.
After reports.
Those are the reports for the end of the line.
Yeah.
And I know it was in the top of her deal.
It, it, that didn't.
PC alcohol beverage is probably close to that.
I think it's.
Is that it?
It needs some alcohol, it needs some.
I think it's, I think it's.
These are resolutions. I know.
There she comes.
Cindy, have you got the mortgage alcohol thing or is that still in your folder up on top?
Morning, morning tax certification.
Oh, yeah, is it on the agenda?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it is still, it's on my things, let me grab it real quick.
Yeah, it's, I know she had it because it's up in her slot.
Alrighty.
And Jerry Schaefer was so funny, he never would make a motion on the.
Oh, he would it?
He was so funny.
Even though it's a tax, really? That dedication right there. Did he abstain, did he even vote on it?
No, he didn't vote for it, but it was just kind of a funny, a funny thing, it was kind of a joke. No, he didn't vote for it, but it was just kind of a funny, a funny thing, it was kind of a joke between us, so, and I'd say.
He'd say, Cindy, go ahead.
I said, yeah, I'd say, well, give me your alcohol taxes, if you don't, if you don't want to vote for them, give them to me.
Your cities.
I know, I know, I know. I know, I'm gonna give them to my Lamont town, if you don't want them for Pond Creek, give them to Lamont.
Yeah, exactly, he probably said, we don't want it.
Yeah, mortgage, yeah, we've already moved on mortgage tax, and then we'll do the alcohol.
Okay.
Certificate.
I think Steve is all about that one.
Allocation of alcohol, if you just go right there, stop.
Yeah.
I didn't know what the rest of it said. That's how far I got.
Okay, we need a motion.
We did.
We did the motion, we need to vote on that, uh, mortgage and tax certification.
Who made the motion?
I, uh, Steve.
I did.
I seconded.
And now we need to vote on that one, Cindy.
All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item E, allocation of alcohol beverage tax for March twenty nineteen, eleven thousand four hundred and three dollars and sixty-one.
I've been selling a lot of alcohol down there.
That's.
I have to write it down whenever I drink one, so. For tax, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Hey, see, first week in office and the tax doubles, eh?
Oh, coincidence, I don't think so. All right, I'll, I'll move to allocate the alcohol tax for March two thousand nineteen at eleven thousand four hundred and three sixty-one.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye. It's that whole alcohol thing. I was sitting there telling people that I wasn't, that I wasn't trying to hog all that credit for the alcohol tax regulations, Steve, that's, there's been a lot consumed.
That, that is, I think last month was like six thousand.
Really?
Was it ten, was it?
Uh.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So it's doubled anyway, since it, yeah, ah, awesome. That's what it's there for.
Item F, monthly reports, uh, officers' reports for Assessor, County Clerk, County Court Clerk, Election Board, Health Department Sheriff and Treasurer, all subject to audit.
Do we have them?
Right here they are. Do we have them all? I don't know.
Yes, they should all, yeah.
I would make a motion to acknowledge the monthly officer's report for the Assessor, County Clerk, Court Clerk, Election Board, Health Department Sheriff and Treasurers, all subject to audit.
Hmm, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
And that's a resolution, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was reading it.
What we do on these every month, we have to, uh, they give a report.
Pretty much read it.
They'll fill, they fill out this paper, and the Treasurer will fill out this paper and show what they deposited and what vouchers were given, and it's just kind of a check, send a balances, make sure that all their cash funds are, are transferred, cause you can't keep, yeah, they have to close their track, let me sign it real quick.
Gotcha.
They gotta, they've gotta, they can't keep money in their cash accounts, they've gotta transfer it to someplace, so.
Gotcha.
Well, yeah, I guess the Election Board.
It's an official depository, is, you know, it's the officer's account specifically, rather than a cash fund, but.
Okay, cool.
Cindy, did yours not get vouched out at the end of the month? I mean, it still shows a balance, I mean, it just shows vouchers where it's vouched, but it didn't show as being vouched out in her report.
I have another one over there, let me go see if it's on that one.
Okay.
Hi, can you come over for a second? All right, thank you.
And the County Clerk, County Clerks is, um, a little different, it's by statute, how they have to divide it up by recording fees and preservation fees, and hers goes, there should, there should be, yeah, there should be one that shows, this should show zero.
Oh.
So she needs to go see if she's got a corrected one for that. This shows, you're showing that they're vouched, but, but, but it doesn't show Penny ever vouched, it shows it's vouched, it shows a balance of four thousand two hundred and forty seventy-five in that account.
Okay, I just don't have the origi, the original one that's signed, but she did voucher those out.
Okay, we need that, she's going, she's going to get it. Steve needs that to sign. And then we can attach the corrected one to it.
Alcohol allocation. At it, girl. Somebody, somebody's following, yeah.
It's just on the cloud.
Yeah, we all are.
No, this wasn't.
It's the one that Penny has assigned that shows all the checks taken out.
Yeah, and I, I, do I, I mean, how do I go?
Oh, have you, well, hang on a minute, let me look, did you ever sign it?
I didn't sign it.
Okay.
I don't remember signing it, let's put it that way, I don't remember signing it.
But you usually ha, get a signed copy from her normally?
Yeah, I usually.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure it out in my head.
It's a red one, it's.
It's like this, it has a.
Yeah, yeah.
And it has her, her does on it, I just got, put my copy on there, but I've got all the voucher numbers.
Yeah. That's what I was reading, but you'll kind of hang out till you get that.
And the, the Court Clerks is pretty confusing, because she collects money, and all of those fees are divided through.
Yes, different departments, uh-huh.
Twenty-some different things, and it's, and it's pretty. But that's why we acknowledge them and don't prove them subject to audit, because we don't know for sure.
Right. And it's so different, everything's different.
I mean, do you attach this to something that they sign?
I know, they don't sign it, they just look at it, but.
Yeah, they don't sign anything.
For you?
Yeah. Well.
No, I don't.
Yeah, they sign that top page.
Do they sign them?
They sign that top page, the, the one that you are writing on.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're giving them.
Okay, are you sure?
I hope so. I don't know, you tell me.
I don't know.
Thank you very much. Okay, here we go, Cindy.
Okay, that'd be fine, and then go with the whichever.
It's right there on top.
Oh, there, okay, well, just do that.
How was your conference?
It was good, it was at, um, St. Malo.
Yeah. Did Debbie show up this year?
I didn't see Debbie.
Yeah, she's coming in already, this is.
Yeah, that's, well, that's, uh, we did Kathy and a bunch of others come to Old County, and we all did go out Thursday night, and we had a night, we went out and karaoke, and danced, we all danced, and had a great time.
Good.
That was, that was fun. Yeah, they had a late, the Speaker was on, uh, Human Resources, it was, it was, she, she, you could tell she'd dealt more with not necessarily county.
Corporations. County government is different than.
Yeah, it was, it was good.
It was windy. They were crazy, aren't they? There's a lot to it, I'm sure, I can't even imagine.
I was just making my stuff, you know, it's like, it's like.
The same scenario, it's like you have so much planning before, and then you do it, and you're covered. Oh, it'll be good, I'm sure.
Penny, do you know, how, how much did, has Chisholm View paid in, uh, subject to, can, I just.
We are lacking two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars being paid off, and that's General and Health. Schools were paid off before the end of June, three million dollars, that was theirs, but we did not, our last payment, we just now, this morning, got forty-one thousand dollars for General and Health, but we're still lacking over two hundred thousand dollars to be paid.
Oh, do they? Oh, they're paying.
Okay, item G, jail report, March twenty nineteen.
I'm gonna just make read to copy, this is just an acknowledgement.
That you have the original in your file?
I have the original, yeah.
Let's touch it, who's been in his jail all month?
Mine here?
Well, not this month.
Nope, I don't see that, no, I'll do it.
And, and it'll tell you, like, you know, what their warrants were.
Oh, I see.
What you're, we're looking at is mainly the, the days, because we need to know how many meals, that then tells us how much their meals were. So like, he spent, he was allowed two thousand one hundred and thirty-five, he spent seventeen hundred, so he's four hundred and thirty-five dollars he didn't spend, so sometimes he's over, sometimes he's under.
Sure, uh, that just depends on, that can change a lot, probably.
A lot of our inmates are, um, from Canadian County.
I will, uh, move to acknowledge the jail report for March two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
To acknowledge the jail report for March twenty nineteen. Item H, state expenditures for DA's office, March twenty nineteen. Hell, yeah, 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 five hundred and ninety. Five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
I would make a motion to approve the state expenditure reimbursement for the DA's office in the amount of five hundred ninety-five seventy-three.
I second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Yeah, we don't sign this, but it just shows what, what he spent out of his account, and then it gets paid back to us.
Oh, mistake, okay, cool.
Item I is a payroll voucher for the Election Board Secretary for March twenty nineteen, in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents.
Yeah, I will, uh, I will move.
Okay, says total amount of, yeah, yeah, this is the difference, and it shows on here, the total amount paid is two thousand nine ninety-three seventy-five, but we're only responsible for the two thousand five fifty.
They repay us, pay, we, yeah, they pay us twenty-five fifty, but it actually costs us more to, to, to.
Yeah, I set it back, didn't I?
For, yeah, for, yeah, just for Robbins, and then we pay all of Brenda's, but that's, that's all they allow us, it's a hundred and thirty-five percent, but it costs us more than that.
Yeah.
So, you say you moved to accept it?
Yeah, I'll move to accept it. Okay, claim voucher for Election Board Secretary.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried, okay. Item J, declaration twenty nineteen dash twenty-two, declaration surplus for roller shells inventory number, C one 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 dash zero four for the Treasurer's Office.
I move to approve the declaration surplus twenty nineteen dash twenty-two for roller sh, shelves inventory C one 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 oh four for the Treasurer's Office.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
She's graciously giving them to us, so.
Nice.
Those little suckers are not cheap either, I'm sure if you have, yeah, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item K is twenty nineteen dash twenty-three, resolution for disposing of the roller shells inventory, C one 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 oh four dash oh four, Treasurer's Office to the County Clerk's Vault.
All right, I will move the two thousand nineteen through twenty-three resolution for disposing roller shells, inventory C one 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 dash oh four, Treasurer's Office to County Clerk's Vault.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
So then those are going your inventory?
Yes, yes, we'll get them put online.
Cool. That's acknowledging that she gave them.
Okay, and item L is twenty nineteen dash twenty-four, resolution for project J three dash one two two one, oh oh four in the hole, CI, State Job thirty-one twenty-two one oh four in the hole, between Grant County and ODOT, bridge and approach on North South twenty-seven seven zero over Sand Creek, which is two miles west and four point eight miles south of Manchester, and that is in District One, and I kind of read through this, it looks like the common, uh, contract like we've signed before, Stephen has signed off on it, basically tells us what we have to do, we have to pass this resolution, which it explains in the paperwork, that's what we're doing.
Let's see, is that SERB money?
Yes.
Or, or STP, that's SERB money?
This will be SERB money, this is the last one I added to my SERB plan, so, um, I would make a motion to approve the resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-four.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
And I have two copies. I didn't know, does CED need an original or not?
Yeah, there's, there's more paperwork to sign.
Yeah, cause that goes down to ODOT too.
Yeah.
It's signed there. Let's see, I better put the date on there.
So, that's, that's the next item, which is, we haven't gotten to where to get ready to sign yet.
Oh.
That's the project agreement, which is the next line item.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you just the resolutions, sign them first?
All right.
That one right there on top that's got the red.
Okay, so the financing is with the, uh, CED for the SERB funds? Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, she'll let you guys sign it and then we'll hand it back around. This'll be back page here. Okay, item M is, uh, project maintenance, financing, and right-of-way agreement for the project J three dash one-two-two-one oh-four, not, oh-oh-four in the hole, CI, state job number three-one-two-two-one oh-four in the hole. When Grant County and ODOT bridge approach on the north-south two-seven-seven zero over Sand Creek, two miles west and four point eight miles south of Manchester. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I really like you, when you do your motions, you need to read all of that back.
There you go.
Supposed to.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, of course, my gosh. I'd have been out of breath, Bobbit.
Well, Cindy does add a lot more than I do, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
But I talk fast.
But I will be honest with you, as the secretary, when I go, but if I'm not sure, it is very helpful.
Oh, yeah.
If, when you go back to listen to, here's, I made up, explaining this on the next item.
Didn't take long to eat your name on everything.
You want these, that's all right. Okay, item N, acknowledged increase in the election board secretary's salary implemented by state election board effective the, the first day of the fifth month of twenty nineteen. And you'll see on the, on the first page behind the opening page, it explains the salary will be two thousand one ninety-one twenty-five. And right now, it is one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight point nine seven.
I just now, now, in that one thousand nine thirty-eight ninety-seven is fifty dollars, is, there was, cause we had it broke out, I don't know why.
Oh, the fifty dollars is the matching, uh, deferred comp.
Oh, okay.
It's part of this, it's, it's, it, that should be, showed as a benefit.
Okay.
But it goes in, it's a, it, it goes in the...
That'd be the fifty dollars down to that four oh one A?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, let's see. Yes, it's the four oh one A, yes.
And we have a NACO.
Yeah, but that's not National Association County, that's something else.
Okay, okay.
That's a capital O, NACO is N-A-C, little, although this is all capitalized.
And what I did was I just went in and cre- and put the correct amount in and then recalcu- had the system recalculate it? And that's how I arrived at these figures from the CalPro.
And we did, when we worked on the budget, she did include that in, cause we knew at the time when we did our budget what that increase would be. So that, that if the, you know, Alex, after she runs the payroll, she might check and make sure that we've got enough to get through June, the end of the year. And remember, we'll have to run that June payroll, June thirtieth and hold it, even though we usually do it in July, but to make sure it's in our fiscal year, right?
Yeah, we need to make sure it registers.
Right.
Oh, gotcha, we'll get it done and...
I think we, I think we had to do, we have to do paper checks for everybody that month because you have to hold them, cause we don't pass them out. But they've gotta be registered, so you, it's a little bit different.
Before the end of the month. Cause otherwise, that's totally screwed, everything. Then it's basically worthless if we don't get them to your office.
Well, um, do I need, uh...
You just acknowledge it, yeah.
Uh, they, uh, move to acknowledge the increase in election board secretary's salary implemented by state election board effective five-one of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the increase. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item O, nationwide plans, four oh one A and four fifty-seven B for Grant County.
No, I do not have them back from Stephen, but I wrote myself a note for today. I will get with him to, I'll tell him we're, we've gotta have those by next week.
Yeah, last, next week, so, it's the last week.
Yeah.
We have to have it next week and there's no...
I will definitely make sure we have it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so no action.
And on that note, I'll just really quickly, um, yeah, the, people, you know, if they need to make changes, is, is Alex gonna come enroll everybody and all the health and, on that?
We're gonna have to do it that way, yeah, yeah.
That due May first, isn't it?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think it is.
What's bad is they didn't, you know, they, have they ever gotten an email stating that?
I have not seen it sent in, uh, but I haven't seen anything on it, but, you know, we, they, they missed the last email to you, so you probably need to follow up on...
They say they're sending it, but why is it not coming through? It's not in my junk or anything.
So, so you better follow up on that.
Yeah, I will do that today. Those are my two important things.
Okay.
Was there an acknowledgement to sign on this or do we just have to acknowledge?
No, that just is acknowledgement.
Just making sure.
Okay, so if you'll follow up on that, that'll appreciate that. Item P, courthouse renovations and relocation.
The only thing, while I was at my county clerk school, we have one more, uh, company going to come and bid on our IT, uh, things. And I've already sent, I sent the bid to them Thursday whenever, it's Apprentice, they're out of Tulsa and they were excited to come. And they go, that's exactly what we do, is that kind of stuff.
That's great.
I said, please come and...
Yeah, great.
So they will plan to be here at the pre-bid meeting.
Great.
Are they associated with the Apprentice in Arkansas with this program?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Cause I, I noticed the email from him said Little Rock and the gentleman I spoke to was Cornell Cross. He's the director of Client Solutions and they're Rogers, Arkansas, North, North Little Rock, Arkansas, and Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm. Director of Client Solutions, is that a salesperson?
I think that's a fancy title for a salesman.
Wow!
Yeah.
He probably took the title out the race.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, I guess the, uh, the culvert has been put in, um, for the relocation of the portable buildings. And I happen, I drive by to make sure and guess it's been done. And, uh, I know I spoke to, um, Mr. From Bain Properties, his name is G, J Biz, that's his first name, J Biz.
Nice.
J's, J Biz Bain is his name.
Uh, J Biz, he's a busy man.
He's a rapper.
And he, and so he said, it looks like it will probably be the end of April, but they'll get them moved in by the end of April, hopefully.
That's cutting it short, that's cutting it short because he's got to have it set up.
But he said, once it's, he said, once we, he goes, it won't take long to do it once we're there. He said a day or two, so...
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, so good.
Excellent.
Yeah, and, yeah, I guess, um, I give him, you gave him Robert's number so that Robert can help him. Yeah, I think Robert said he'd been talking to him, cause I need to make sure when we get them there, where they're gonna set them. We know, gotta go as far south and, and then as close, far, as close south to that pole and as close to the east to that sewer drop line in that pole. We need to set them in there as close as we can.
But it is that little area that has like that little fenced off thing there?
Yeah, uh-huh, that, we wanna stay away because of those, uh, solar panels on there. Now, they said that if our building blocks the solar panels, they can raise them up, that won't be a problem. I mean, we're, we're trying to keep them from having to do that. And then that'll also allow us, if we need to, maybe, I, maybe have parking maybe on that side, you know?
That's my next question was on the parking, do we need to be do, or, I mean, what y'all been thinking or do we think it'll be okay?
No, right now, we're gonna try to do the parking on the gravel over by the building. They're gonna move all their farm stuff either up to the FSA office or to my old shop. I told them they could park it there and move that, but they still use their shed, but they won't park anything there, so we'll try to stay on that gravelled area, yeah.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, brings us down to item eight, new business. Cindy, do you have any new business?
I do not.
Steve, do you have any new business?
I don't have them good.
Okay, Cindy?
Nope.
Nope, I don't either. Item nine, uh, commissioners comments. Steve, I'll let you go first.
All right, well, I've been really adjusting this last week. Um, went to the, uh, the ACO conference down there as far as the safety conference, learned, had some good stuff. Um, been adjusting to, to the personnel and really trying to get to know them. They've been working hard, they're grading the roads. We've got a, um, uh, been requested that I go to the CED Wednesday. I'm gonna go to that meeting, uh, and meet the engineers and things and speak with them. We have an incident in my area already to deal with that's, might be pretty tough. But I wanna talk with them first and get the lowdown so I can go speak with this individual and, and hopefully we can get something resolved, so. But everything's just business as usual and like I said, I'm just feeling my way and getting more comfortable every day, but it's just gonna take some time.
Okay, excellent. Cindy?
Um, tomorrow I'll be going to Wichita to the National Association of County Engineering, uh, conference for one day. I'll go to the CED meeting on Wednesday. Uh, seems like there's something on Thursday too. I've got my, uh, NACO Central Region Conference call also tomorrow, I'll be doing that from, from, uh, from Wichita. Oh, Cindy, have you, I got in my book, we're supposed to have an OPEH and W board meeting on Thursday, the eighteenth. Have you seen anything on that?
Uh-uh.
Okay, I haven't seen that either, so...
And do you have it down for...
I have it down for the eighteenth, it's a regular schedule, but I hadn't seen anything. I didn't know if you had that or not, so I'll check with them and, and see about that. Steve, are you going to that Western Workforce Development at Weatherford on Thursday? We put you on that board, or did you even know about it?
I didn't know about it yet, I mean...
I forwarded that information to Sherry.
Okay.
Sherry, you might check with her and see.
I will.
It's at Weatherford.
I'm in the process of getting my communication set up with her, she's gonna be very helpful. Um, I haven't got to sit down with her, but she usually keeps me informed of that kinda stuff, so...
Okay, so...
I'm feeling my way.
I got you. I mean, I know you had a lot on your plate.
There's a lot of feeling to do.
Exactly.
Well, we'll get there.
And Friday is a holiday and since our shop is closed on Friday, we're taking off Monday. Well, our shop will be closed on Monday.
Gotcha.
Um, I don't know what you're doing, cause you're, are you still working four, you're gonna stay the four days? So, yeah, I guess, I don't know if you're closed Thursday or Monday, we're closed Monday, they wanted the day after. People, that way if people travel, they've got a better deal.
Well, no.
Um, today is the final deadline day to have comments sent to the EPA and the Army Corps on the waters of the US. So I did submit a letter on our behalf this morning, uh, to NACO and I will be sending it copies, I meant to make you guys copies. I'll make you copies of what I've sent. I'll be sending them to Senator Inhofe in Langford and to Representative Lucas Cole and Horn as well. Um, it's the, cause they're doing the revision definition of the waters of the US, you know, that got thrown into two different courts. And twenty-three states are under one deal and twenty-seven states are under the other and it's been quite a, quite a mess. So, I have, uh, proposed, sent a letter for that. They're also asking for a letter on our broadband, uh, issues, um, so I'm, I'm gonna work on that. It's, it's due tomorrow, I haven't got that letter done. Um, ACO, I guess we've got our legislating moving forward, our travel bill got signed by the governor. Um, the four hundred got out of committee and will go to the floor. And twelve fifty is out of committee and will go to the floor as well, so we're watching both of those moving forward. Um, I don't know, I'm, where we are on the deferred comp bill, I did not check on that this morning. I, uh, was in the city last week and I forgot to check on that, so we'll see where we are on that as well.
Okay.
And other than that, we've got a lot of projects going on. Um, we're, uh, got a lot, trying to get some culverts put in that we found out that got, that, you know, don't work and, working on that. And hauling some more shale. Uh, Robert leaves Monday, he goes in for his surgery, so, uh, Paul is gonna help me out a little bit. And we'll probably have some part-time help, uh, in the office to cover the desk on Wednesdays or something, so...
Okay.
With that, that's all that I know of at this time.
All right, uh, our CMI machine has, uh, been fixed. We're going down tomorrow to pick it up, we're gonna bring it to my shop and look it over. Uh, I've got a project, a mile of road up by Manchester that I'm going to, uh, in front of the gas plant up there. And their gas plant is gonna help me pay for the stabilization part of that. But we're going to try this, uh, new product out.
Oh, yeah, right. When are you doing that?
Well, we haven't got that all set up yet, but we're shooting for next week. I don't know whether that's gonna happen or not. Uh, depends on what the machine needs, uh, for repair, uh, teeth and stuff like that.
I wouldn't mind coming up and, and watching you when they do that.
Okay, I've got a couple other commissioners that have expressed interest in that too. So, uh, I'm kinda basically looking at two weeks from now is when I would really like to set it up. But Joe seems to wanna get started on it and, uh, depends on when he can come up and kinda go through the basics with us. Uh, get some rollers around and, and some equipment around up there. Um, we are continuing to work on our bypass out here for the Clyde Road. It looks like we ran into some, we ran into some situation where AT&T had a company hired to put their phone line up temporary. And they put it up to thirteen foot and it needs to be eighteen foot over the roadways and driveways and stuff. And come to find out...
Actually, our permit max is twenty feet.
Well, and that's what Jason recommended to them, twenty feet.
Yeah, that's what our permits say.
They weren't aware that they had to fill out our permit.
I didn't, I didn't, I sent you that stuff.
You sent me that and I forwarded that on. And Jason said, he contacted them and now they are aware that they have to, to meet and contact us. They hadn't even contacted OG&E and that's whose poles they was putting their line on.
Yeah.
Not a good deal.
No.
We've run a lot, ended a lot of that in Palm Creek, our lines and telephone lines been jerked down. I mean, implements these days are, are crazy big. I mean, that thirteen foot, it'll be knocked down.
The subcontractor was out there doing what he was told by AT&T. And AT&T hadn't, went and contacted OG&E, nobody has that paperwork. And they, April the second meeting, they said that this was all gonna be buried. And then all of a sudden last week, they're putting it overhead. And it looks a little fishy as to the timing, that they may be trying to sneak that by. I don't know that for sure and I shouldn't say that. But whenever one week you're gonna bury it six foot deep and then the next week it, they're out there hanging it on the light poles.
They'd be money ahead to just bury it. I know that takes a lot more money and effort.
Good morning.
I missed it? You did.
No.
Yeah.
No, we've got a few minutes left.
No, we've got a few minutes left.
Nothing new.
We're on the commissioners' comments.
That's all the new business I have.
All the old comments?
Yeah, all the commissioners' comments.
Bring us down?
Brings us down to item ten.
I'll move it, we adjourn, I'm pretty good at that.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
I still say you got.